Welcome to the 2017 Candidates Forum, sponsored by the Wallingford Community Women. I'm Jean McFarland, and I'm the program moderator. This segment features eight of the 14 candidates running for town council. The format will be as follows. The first part of the program will consist of questions asked of the candidates by members of the local media, including The Record Journal and The New Haven Register, and students from Lyman Hall High School and Mark T. Sheehan High School. The second part will allow the candidate to make a closing statement and make a comment on a question not previously asked of them directly. During the question-and-answer portion of the program, each candidate will have two minutes to respond to a question. Each candidate will then have two and a half minutes to make their closing remarks. Before beginning the questioning, I'd like to introduce eight of the candidates running for town council. They are, from left to right, Vincent Servoni, Republican; Bruce Conroy, Democrat; Craig Fishbein, Republican; James Hein, Jamie Hein, Democrat; Tom Lathan, Republican; Gina Morgenstein, Democrat; John Laterno, Republican; and Jesse Reynolds, Democrat. Mr. Terrell, will you please ask your first question of Mr. Servoni?
Good evening, Vinnie.
Good evening, Luther.
Where do you stand on the future of the community pool? Are you in favor of closing it, or do you think there's something that could be done to make it more of a revenue-producer?
It's a good question, and the timing is challenging, because as we sit here, I haven't heard that we have a budget from Hartford yet. But I know it's partway through. In any event, I do feel that the community pool has value to the community. I think people look fondly upon it, even though its recent numbers don't necessarily reflect it. I am not decided in favor of closing it at all. I think that, in light of the information we received at a recent council meeting, the council would be wise to appoint a committee to study what the future of the pool should look like and come back to the council with suggestions. It would be my hope that we could turn the pool from something that's costing the town money recently into something much closer to a break-even proposition. You know, I'd like to see the opportunity to examine the fees and consider, you know, charging an excess price for out-of-town participants at the pool. I'd really like to explore the possibilities, and I'm certainly not resigned against it as I sit here tonight. Luther, thank you for that question, and I do want to thank the Wallingford Community Women for hosting this event and for -- and Government TV for also making this happen. Thank you.
Lila Pickering from Sheehan High School, would you please ask Bruce Conroy the next question?
Hi, Mr. Conroy. I hope you're having a great evening so far. My question is, are you more in favor of using large amount of monies from the town fund balance reserve to fund projects, or do you feel that money should be left in these accounts and only used for emergencies?
Oh, I think absolutely that money from our public accounts, in excess of what we need to maintain our AAA bond rating and something for a surplus for a contingency fund, we should spend it on town projects. It's shameful when we walk through Celebrate Wallingford and there are potholes in the roads where we had our celebration. Cold patches, tar patches on sidewalks, where you can't even push a stroller over it. So yes, we should spend our excess money to improve our town and improve our people's quality of life. Next.
Audrey Larson from Lyman Hall High School, would you ask the next question?
Good evening, Mr. Fishbein.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fishbein.
Audrey, how are you?
Good, how are you? As a student, I am particularly interested in seeing more academic and extracurricular activities for all students geared towards engineering and science. As a town council member, how would you support our Board of Education in these endeavors?
Well, certainly, we have an excellent STEM program run by Christopher Stone. Chris and I communicate, and that's the Science, Technology, Energy, Math Program. He runs a summer camp. I've been very supportive of that. I am supportive of any -- just about any extracurricular activity, and not just in the engineering field, but one of the things that I was very happy about in years past was there was talk about the Board of Education setting up a restaurant of some sort on Center Street. You know, engineering, a lot of it is math, and teaching young people how to run a business is hands-on, a lot of math, and I think that would be very helpful to those young people that are interested in getting involved in something like engineering, very issue-focused, very specific. So, thank you for the question, and thank you to the Wallingford Community Women for putting this on today.
Matt Zebrich, would you please ask the next question of Jamie Hein?
Jamie, how are you?
Very good, Matt. Thank you.
On a recent episode of the Citizen Mike Show, you said that the town needs to create a more accurate budget each year, and the town needs to get rid of what you called "fluff" in the budget each year. If elected, where would you look to cut fluff from the budget?
Thank you for the question. Let me start by thanking the Wallingford Community Women for putting on this forum. Thank you for Government TV for broadcasting it. Thank you to all the questioners. Thank you for all the residents that have shown up here tonight, and thank you for -- to all the residents that are watching at home. There are plenty of places that we can cut. One of the points that I think I made on the show last night was that each year, what the administration does is they allocate a certain amount of money from the reserve fund. And to equal out the budget, what they then do is they overestimate expenses. They never, ever touch the money that's allocated in that reserve fund. And what you end up with is, because they've overestimated expenses, you end up with a surplus every year, okay? And so if you take a look at this last year's budget, for example, Public Works was overestimated -- I think we overestimated by about $400,000. Board of Ed, we overestimated by about $800,000. Now, those departments were still able to function. They've functioned on a lot less. So those, I think, are some areas that we can look at to cut, and I think it'd be a more accurate budget if we started off with real numbers from the beginning. Thank you.
Luther, would you please ask the next question of Tom Lathan?
Good evening, Tom.
Hey, Luther, how are you?
There's been a lot made about the declining enrollment of the town's volunteer firefighter force. The town has closed two stations. What would you suggest or would recommend be done as far as attracting more volunteers to serve on the volunteer fire departments in town?
Sure. I don't know if the answer is so much, what do we need to do to attract necessarily more volunteers, but how do we organize the volunteers that we have? And I think that that's what we've been doing, working with the fire department and trying to figure out, and I -- when I say "fire department," I guess I mean the professional fire department, and trying to figure out, how can we best allocate the resources that we have? I've, you know, I've been neighbors with volunteer firefighters and volunteer firefighter chiefs. I've been to their dinners and their banquets, been to their events, and I've talked to them. You know, they're the dads and the moms when I go to cheerleading or soccer. It takes a special kind of person to be invested at that sort of volunteer level. And yeah, it's hard. How do you recruit more? I don't know what else we could do, aside from the fact that we're saying we need more people, and we've closed two. And it's not like when we said, oh, we're going to close, you know, one of these volunteer fire departments, that all of a sudden there was, you know, 20 people that were raising their hands and showing up and saying, oh, wait, I want to do this. I didn't know. I think it's a testament to the times. We have two parents in families that are both wage earners, or we have single-parent families. It's just very different. I think what we need to do is continue what we've been doing, and these are strong communities within itself that are very fraternal and get people going and involved. Let them keep doing what they're doing, and I don't know what else we could have done to say besides, "we closed them." People should know, since we closed them, we need more people, is to just focus on what we have. It's just like the budget. Focus on what we have and do the best that we can with that.
Lila, would you please ask the next question of Gina Morgenstein?
Good evening, Ms. Morgenstein.
Hi, Lila.
My question to you is, what else do you feel could be done to help Wallingford save energy?
So that's a very good question, Lila. The fact is that we do have our own electric company. Some people believe that it's actually run by the town. It's run by a separate entity. The town does have oversight. We have a Public Utilities Commission made up of three people. There was discussion, bipartisan discussion, to, in the charter, change that to five people. So currently, we have three people making decisions, and our energy-saving efforts currently are efforts that have been done for years and years. People are able to have a free energy audit. You can see where you need to be weatherproofing. You can get efficient light bulbs, all kinds of services, and that's great. The fact is that we do cut electric rates by having people save money, and the people saving money is great. But we do live in a time where renewable energy also exists, and we have not so far as a town seen the benefit of renewable energy. We've actually said, "Why would we do that? Our rates are low." Well, it's similar to several things here in town. We look at the here and now. We don't look at the future. And so when we're producing energy from fossil fuels, we're not only looking at the cost of those fossil fuels, but what that means for our future and your future. And I think exploring alternative energy, like a lot of things in this town, should at the very least be looked at. Thank you for that question, and thank you for everyone coming out tonight.
Audrey, would you please ask the next question of John Laterno?
Good evening.
Good evening.
As a citizen or town council member, what do you think your greatest accomplishment has been in terms of helping our town?
I can't say really any -- one particular thing. I think it's a compilation of quite a few things. Every year, this is, I'm going into finishing my 10th year as councillor, and working on budgets every year, bringing the town, keeping the town in balance. I think working with the school system, with their budgets, and making sure that we have a good education system. So there's -- and the same thing with the police and fire department, public safety. It's coming up here and making decisions that affect those departments. And I consider that when we have small victories. It might be buying a new ambulance. It might be adding more personnel to the police department. But that's what this is all about. So it's not really one particular thing that stands out. It's a compilation of a lot of items. Thank you.
Matt, would you please ask the next question of Jesse Reynolds?
Hi, Jesse. You've recently said the town needs to focus on attracting more young professionals and Wallingford residents graduating from college. What specific measures would you propose to achieve this?
Did I turn it on right? Okay. Sorry, on/off again. Well, it's a good question. The bottom line is that as we age as a population, and coincidentally, if you go on YouTube and find a video of me 10 years ago talking in this very spot, I said the same exact thing. We need more young people in this town to grow our tax base. If we continue to age as a population, we will continue to rely more heavily on older people to pay our bills. If the education budget by contract goes up every year, that means everybody, including people who don't have children, in the education system will continue to pay more. So that means that we need to get people who are not of, let's say, you know, family age, but in addition, we need to get more families into town so that we have more long-term stability when it comes to generating revenue from our residents. Now, the other thing that is the problem with the state in general is that as our population ages, we don't have the ability to attract businesses here because we're too expensive. So people like myself with a master's degree in my mid-40s with two kids, we're all on insurance. We are not a good investment for a new company, and if that's all we have to offer as a base for employment, then that's going to be the problem. So how do we get people here, I think was the question, right? Okay, well, first of all, we have an improved transit system downtown. What do we know about young people? They don't like to drive cars like we do. They like walkable communities. They like to take their bikes places. We don't have that infrastructure. So the first step that we need to do is come up with a long-term plan to grow the area around the transit district. And then the second thing we need to do is to work with our neighboring towns to make sure we're not duplicating efforts. If Meriden's doing one thing that looks good for Meriden, then let Meriden do that and we do something else. We shouldn't try to pretend to be New Haven, but maybe we can attract people who work at Yale to take their train into New Haven, people like that. So I think that's what really needs to be the focus, is how do we develop this town to be more attractive for young people? Thanks.
Thank you. Lila, would you please ask the next question of Vincent Servoni?
Good afternoon. What do you feel will be the largest challenge facing Wallingford coming up in the future, and how would you try and resolve it?
Good evening, Ms. Pickering. Thank you for that challenging question. The largest problem in Wallingford in the future and how we solve it. I think one of the largest challenges that Wallingford faces, as Mr. Reynolds indicated, is that we're in Connecticut, and we're surrounded by a state that struggles to be business-friendly and continues to perpetuate a certain level of tax dependency. And that makes -- that's a challenge for Wallingford to sustain through. You know, as it is, we're looking at reduced funding from the state, and that's money that we, as residents of Connecticut, we in Wallingford have paid. We've paid income tax. We've paid sales tax, and we're being threatened with losing that money. So our challenge is going to be to continue to fund the essential services that we need to fund in a challenging economy that surrounds us. And how do we solve that? We have to look at ways to tighten our belt, to become more efficient, to make our local government run less expensively. And whether we look for those ways in technology, replacing humans or other services that cost less money, that's one way, and hopefully, we continue in our work to bring businesses to town. I think we've been relatively successful as compared to other towns in this state to bring businesses to town who continue to support our tax base so that this is an affordable place to live for residents. Thank you for that question.
Audrey, would you please ask the next question of Bruce Conroy?
As a citizen of Wallingford, what do you think is Wallingford's greatest economic need, and how would you address this as a town council member?
That's a great one. Our greatest economic need is a vision and someone, a planner, that actually has experience selling municipalities. So we need someone to direct our economic development at the direction of the council, of course. We need a professional who does this for a living, who sells municipalities, who can make -- who shows us how to make it more business-friendly and corporate-friendly, because our corporate partners in this town are disappearing. And so far, the leadership hasn't shown us the way. The way is to make sure that our commission has all the tools necessary to bring Wallingford into the future, to build a better Wallingford. And as a councillor, who has worked all over this country, I have many contacts and I know a lot of people, and I believe I can put those to good use here. Thanks for the question. It was good.
Matt, would you please ask the next question of Craig Fishbein?
Hey, Craig, how are you?
Good, how are you, Matt?
Can't complain. The issue of Thurston Foods trucks affecting residents, nearby residents, has been before the Town Council Ordinance Committee and the Town Council for some time now, and sort of seems to be in limbo. So I guess, what do you think the council's next steps in resolving that situation should be?
Well, I chair the ordinance committee, and the issue came out of the ordinance committee to come to the council, which is the procedure, and then at that meeting, it was suggested by Councillor Zandry that the mayor sit down with the interested parties and see if something could be worked out. I had suggested that we come back. We have some sort of date to come back on that. It was pointed out to me that we were going into budget time. I had suggested May 28th. I think that was our next meeting after budget season was over, and since that time, it has not come up on our agenda. So that's the procedural aspect. My concern is that for us to modify the ordinance is not going to solve the problem. The residents are still going to have the noise. The town isn't enforcing the ordinance as it presently exists, which is not a council job. That's the mayor and the law department. So us lifting the prohibition, so to speak, is not going to change that situation. Prohibition there, prohibition not, if the town isn't enforcing the ordinance, it's the same situation. And I feel for the residents, you know, there's the, "You shouldn't have built your house, you know, so close to a plant like that" argument, and I recognize that, and the notice that Thurston gave to the town, I recognize that. But the next step is for the council to do something. As I said, I don't think it solves the problem, and we go from there. So, thank you for the question.
Luther, would you please ask the next question of Jamie Hein?
Jamie, two economic development questions for you. Question one is, does the town need a full-time economic development professional? And the second one is, what would you do to kick-start development around the area of the train station?
Thank you very much for the question, Luther. To the first question, absolutely yes. I don't think there's any doubt that we need a full-time economic director here in town. With respect to the second question, I think it's very important that we really take a look at that area now. I think we probably should have been doing that five years ago. We're kind of behind the eight ball at this point. But I think one of the things that we can do, and the timing is probably perfect for this, is that we -- our reserve fund is at threat right now from the state. My understanding is that the proposed cuts are not going to be as significant as was originally proposed, okay? So what does that mean? That means that we better start looking at that fund and looking at ways to protect that fund, because if it's still sitting there two years from now, we're going to be right back in the same spot. So what I would propose is that -- one of the problems with that area is you have a bunch of small parcels and you can't get developers to take enough time to accumulate enough parcels to do something with. What the town can do is, I think the town should start looking at these parcels when they come up for sale, and they should -- the town should consider purchasing them. The town then would accumulate the properties over a period of time. And then when it's accumulated enough, it can then market the property to a developer, keep some control over the development around the downtown. And I think therefore, over time, you'll start to see some improvement down there. I would like to see some nice mixed-use areas with some apartments, some cafes, and some nice walkable areas for young residents.
Thank you. Lila, would you please ask the next question of Tom Lathan?
I hope you're doing good.
Good, how are you, Lila?
I'm good, thank you. My question is, how do you feel about using private contractors to provide services to our communities when things like blizzards and hurricanes occur?
Sure. Good question. It depends. So part of the issue with, well, to use your example of the blizzards, is that the town is largely budgeted and structured around the fact that we're using our own resources, our own, by resources, funds, employees, vehicles, equipment, whatever that is. And these private organizations out and about around the area, the region, all bid out to towns throughout the year, and whatever it may be, and they procure those bids, and, you know, Cheshire, North Haven, Hamden, whoever gets these independent contractors to do this. And we don't partake in that, because in a normal storm, we're just going to do it ourselves. So when a really bad storm comes along and we're really taxed, and normally, we handle normal storms pretty well. When a really bad storm comes along, everybody is getting hit by it, including the private contractors and the towns that never budgeted or planned or ever intended to use all of their own resources in the first place. So what happens is, and what happened a couple of years ago, was, well, you know, how come the town doesn't reach out and ask some private contractors to help out? It's because they weren't available. Well, that wasn't just why, but that was what would have happened. They're busy already helping the people in the towns they signed up to help in the first place. Not that they signed up to help, but that they signed up to help some plant. So those towns were just not in a position to do what we do. You know, paving the roads came up earlier. We can't just spend more money and pave more roads. We have a limited amount of resources, and by resources, beyond money. I'm talking about people, and vehicles, and equipment. And our plan, and Wallingford has always been very self-sufficient, is to do everything ourselves because it's cheaper, just like when we built a bridge for a million dollars when everybody else was quoting much more. I know my time's running out. There it is. All right. Sorry. Thanks.
Audrey, would you please ask the next question of Gina Morgenstein?
Good evening.
Hi, Audrey.
Hi. What do you love about Wallingford?
That's it. What do I love about Wallingford? Wallingford is a great New England town with a beautiful, walkable downtown. I live right here, raised a great family here. I sit down all the time and make lists of, you know, how am I going to say this or that? So it's a big, long list. We've got the vineyards. We've got the restaurants. We've got a record store. When nobody, you know, typically listens to records any longer, I believe we have the second-oldest cemetery. Wallingford really brings everything for everyone. You can walk. You can bike. It's a wonderful town, and what a great question. The fact is that I wouldn't be up here if I didn't love Wallingford, and what I'd like to see Wallingford do a bit better is, has been mentioned by others. We need to plan for our future. We need to spend in a way that utilizes our resources in a well-planned-out, thought-out manner that keeps our downtown beautiful, improves our areas that are no longer beautiful and need some help. We should not be putting temporary fixes on things. We are spending money to temporarily fix things that really need to be improved much earlier. And so I still love it, and I wouldn't be up here working for it if I didn't. Thank you so much, Audrey, and everyone who's come out tonight. And I have 30 seconds to say, I think the Red Ribbon Week closing ceremony must have closed up because there's a lot more people now in the audience. Thank you, everybody that came out for -- Thank you, everybody that came out for the Walk of Hope. If anyone doesn't know what that is, the Red Ribbon Week is the town's honor to opiate abuse, and families, and survivors, and we have this nationwide crisis that Wallingford has done a great job trying to fight against. Thanks, everyone.
Matt, would you please ask the next question of John Laterno?
Hi John.
Hi Matt.
Do you have any objections to the charter changes reposed by the Charter Revision Commission? And do you plan to vote yes to approve them?
I will definitely vote yes. So I'll start right off with that. I thank the Charter Revision Commission for putting the work in. It was a long, arduous process, and many meetings. They did a great job. They came together, and I believe they came together in a non-political way, and brought what's needed for the charter. It's something that needs to be looked at every now and again, and the way they went about it, it wasn't like last time, where it was basically a wholesale slaughter of our charter, and changing our government drastically. This time, they went for subtle changes, and I believe all of those changes were needed. And I know not everybody's going to agree with me, but I looked at the changes, and I believe it was time, and that, and it was, they're, they're good changes. They're good changes. And it's not going to change Wallingford's government the way it's been projected. And I think there's a lot of misinformation out there, but I would suggest people watch the Record Journal next week. There will be an article in there, it's going to be a quarter-page ad, and it kind of brings it down, and brings it into maybe more understanding. Instead of going through the whole charter, it's going to bring specific, the specific questions, that it'll be easier for people to understand. So, watch for that. And there's also the full, the full charter and the changes are available right here at Town Hall and the Clerk's Office. So I suggest people go there and read those. But I think it's good for Wallingford. Thank you.
Luther, would you please ask the next question of Jesse Reynolds?
Jesse, how would you go about making town government, the day-to-day function of town government, more accessible to the average citizen?
Okay, sorry, I, you know, I turn it off and then everybody talks, I forget. Okay, so, well, I mean, the standard go-to, which I'm sure people are tired of hearing, would be to put more things online. You know, that, there are some issues with that. For example, day-to-day stuff is, you know, for the Town Hall, it's difficult, you have to come within the hours of the Town Hall. And clearly, there are things where you need a human to talk to, and you have to do things like, you know, come down for records and things like that. But there are records you can make available online. I think that it would be wise for us to sort of start thinking about updating some of our processes, especially if we want to attract, you know, as people stop, maybe retire from working here, and you want to hire new people, it's going to be somewhat difficult to bring in new workforce with an older system. It may be less attractive to people. I'd like to see something like Park and Rec become a little bit more user-friendly. No problem. For example, you know, to sign up for the summer program, you have to take time off of work to go stand in line to sign up, and you have to pay by check or cash, and maybe they take credit cards, I'm not 100% sure. But at this point, things like that, you know, it interrupts your daily life, and we're all pretty busy. You know, the other thing to kind of, the other thing to kind of think about too, is that, you know, the summer program itself, which is great, my kids do it, they love it, it only runs from like 8 to 3. And nobody who works a regular schedule can actually afford to either go into work a little late, or leave a little early to pick their kids up. So, I mean, there's little things like that that could make everyone's lives a little easier, but you know, I mean, the standard stuff in terms of making it easier to pay your utilities online, making it easier to pay your taxes online, I mean, you'd probably collect the revenue faster, you could probably account for it faster, things like that. Thanks.
Thank you. Audrey, would you please ask the next question of Vincent Servoni?
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Larson.
What kind of image would you like Wallingford to portray?
That's a great question. And it's a timely question, because, you know, we're at a position where we're marketing our town competitively to the business community. I'd like to portray Wallingford as a friendly place, as a welcoming place, as a place, you know, I think our Economic Development Commission has come up with the slogan that Wallingford is a great place to live and work. So I would, I like that. It says a lot to people. If you're going to think about bringing your business here, wouldn't it be great if you wanted to live, or move yourself here, to live in the town where you run your business? I think that that marketing campaign says a lot about what's great about Wallingford. I'd also portray the image that we take care of each other here. We have a lot of self-started, independently grown organizations that do great things for the people of Wallingford. So we're also a town who takes care of each other. I also think our location is pretty tremendous. You know, we happen to be near the intersection of Routes 91, Routes 15, Route 5. It's an easy place to get to and from, whether going to Boston, or Hartford, or New York. I think it's a great location in the Northeast Corridor to both live and to run a business. So those are the things that I think of, that are great things about Wallingford, and that's what I think our image is. Thank you.
Matt, would you please ask the next question of Bruce Conroy?
Hi Bruce.
Hey.
So the issue of police department staffing has come up several times over the years. The department's staffed below state averages, but Chief Wright says the department's okay with its current staffing right now. Down the road, do you think the town will reach a point where it needs to take a closer look at adding staffing to the police department?
The chief does a great job, and if at the moment, he thinks our staffing is good, our staffing is probably good. But in my opinion, it cannot hurt to have more officers, especially in light of the opioid problem that we have, and that we know has been a problem in Wallingford for a long time. Perhaps we could add officers that are dedicated to just that. We have a department that's dedicated to it, but I want, I would like to see officers dedicated to that problem. Because there are a large number, there's a, look, a very large number of people who deal those drugs in this town. And we need, and they do a good job of hunting them down now, but we can do a better job with a dedicated unit. So we need more cops.
Luther, would you please ask the next question of Craig Fishbein?
Craig, does the town of Wallingford overtax its residents out of fear that if they dip into the rainy day fund, that it'll somehow upset the bond rating agencies?
So I guess, first of all, it presumes, the question presumes, that the town of Wallingford overtaxes its residents. So I think we have to get through that first. I have been adverse to every tax increase since I've been on the council. I think I've been pretty consistent in trying to open doors and to get educated about the budget, in an attempt to keep whatever tax increases lower. So, can I agree with the statement that the town of Wallingford overtaxes its residents? Yeah, I suppose. So getting past that portion of the question, the intent portion, overtaxing the residents to protect the bond rating, well certainly, that's a portion of it, because the amount that's in reserves to protect the bond rating is certainly less than what is in reserves. So any money that goes to reserves is already protecting the bond rating. But then, let's just go back to intent. I don't think there's any intent to do that. I think that it's a function of the economy and various factors. And I think a little pencil sharpening is necessary, but I don't think that anybody intentionally overtaxes the citizens of Wallingford, and certainly not, because the evidence is, certainly it's not solely for the, to protect the bond rating. And I'll tell you, with this year, I think it's to our advantage, so, thank you.
Lila, would you please ask the next question of Jamie Heim?
I hope you're doing good. My next question is, how much of the budget do you feel is appropriate to hold in reserves?
I didn't get the last part of that question, what?
What percent of the budget do you feel is appropriate to hold in reserves?
So, right now, I'm not sure that it's a good idea to hold any money in reserves. As we've seen this past year, the state is in very tough financial condition. And one of the things that they are looking at, in fact, in a report from the governor back in August, he made specific mention of town's reserve funds. So they're looking at our reserve fund, and they've already concluded that our reserve fund is very high. Okay? Now, as I said earlier, it appears that we're going to avoid the significant cuts that were originally proposed. But if we don't do something about reducing that balance in the meantime, two years from now, when the next budget comes up at the state level, if we're still sitting on $29 million, then that's our own fault, if we lose it to the state. And I think that we should be focusing on projects that we can spend money on. And I'm not just talking just to spend willy-nilly, but focus on projects that are going to expand our tax base, so that in the end, what happens is, we have continual revenue coming in on a yearly basis, okay? And so, that sets us up for the long term, where we have increased tax revenue, and we're also at the same time, have reduced our reserves to such an extent that they're not at risk from the state taking them. Thank you.
Audrey, would you please ask the next question of Tom Laffin?
Good evening.
Hi, how are you Audrey?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Some of our parks are well-maintained while others are not. Do you support improving our park system? And if so, what kind of impact would this have on our town?
I'm sorry, can you say the second part of the question again? The, do I support the?
Do you support improving our park system? And if so, what kind of impact would it have on our town?
Sure. Now, I strongly support the Parks and Rec Department, the Public, the Park and Rec Commission, the community pool came up earlier. We have a lot of people that look at all of our parks and our pool, and all of our activities, a lot of people from the town that are volunteers, and that are really invested in, in the community's extracurricular activities. And, and I think the town has been doing the best it can to go through park by park. And sometimes you have community-led movements, such as over by Kendrick Park, and other times you have the town kind of step in, work to improve a town, a town park. And, and we try and budget to keep everything, you know, safe but current at the same time. I think it's important that we realize that there's a balance to everything, that the town overall has needs and obligations that we need to meet. And whether that's paying salaries of our firefighters and police officers, to our public works department employees, or supplying, you know, fun and safe places to our children to play in. It's, it's difficult sitting up here, and every April leads to those, you know, hemming and hawing, and those sleepless nights. What are you going to do about it? And it ultimately comes down to just everybody, the nine of us that sit up here, and whoever will be here starting in January, doing the best that we can. I think that between the council, the mayor's administration, the public work, the public works department, Parks and Recreation, and the Park and Recreation Commission, we have a lot of people working with the neighbors and neighborhoods to make sure that our parks are fun and safe. I think everybody's just doing the best we can, and I think everybody, no matter what party you're in, or who's running for what, wants that.
Matt, would you please ask the next question of Gina Morgenstein?
Hi Gina.
Hey Matt.
Are you comfortable with the size of the town's general fund balance, and would you propose using any of that money for any expenses down the road?
So the, so the general fund balance, as opposed to the overage that Jamie was speaking of?
Yeah, the collective fund balance.
So the collective fund balance. So, so the fact is that we are a town that is struggling a bit due to taxation and the state. We have a large budget that we put together every year, and a lot of expenses. The amount of money that we bring in versus the amount of money that we spend, clearly in the last at least five years, has, has been offset with this overage. And, and I see a town that is really spending our money in a cash-and-spend way. And, and I've gone around to thousands of houses and spoken with people and seen things such as people repairing their driveways on their 20-year-old neighborhood, but yet the road has never been repaired. So they're spending money on their driveway, yet the drainage is, is going to destroy that driveway, because it's not being done properly. So do we have the right amount of money? I think the bigger question is, are we spending it properly? I think we have no use for our AAA bond rating if we don't bond certain things. Rather than repairing seven or eight roads a year, you're never going to come back around and get all those roads done. We should not be priding ourselves on doing all the work ourselves. We're doing it in a manner that is just keeping us by, but we're spending more in the long run. We're spending on temporary fixes, we're spending on improper fixes, when we really should be growing our tax base, and we should be maintaining as we go along, rather than spending more at the long run. Thank you for a very good question.
Luther, would you please ask the next question of John Laterno?
John, what are the top three challenges facing the town of Wallingford? And how would you go about solving them?
The top three challenges? I think, one of them, I think the top challenge is that it's something that we cannot do on a town level, but is what's happening with the state. And we worked on a budget this year, not knowing where we were going with that budget. We did the best we could, but we didn't know if we were going to have to do a supplemental tax or not, because there was no budget from the state. So that is a very, very big concern for us up here. The other parts, I, I think we manage our money well. I think we do well with it. And there's, there could be a little tweaking here and there, but for the most part, we manage well. We do have reserves, and with those reserves, we don't overspend. And that's a challenge, not to overspend, because that's exactly what happened to the state of Connecticut. They overspent, and that's how we ended up where we are today. So that's, that's a challenge for all of us up here, that we have to really watch that. And, but for the most part, we're in good shape. We're in good shape. Thank you.
Lila, would you please ask the last question of Jesse Reynolds?
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Reynolds.
Hi, Lila.
Hi. My question is, what motivates you to be a part of the town council?
That's a good question. I, I think that, I think that basically, I, I feel that I, I have something to offer the town. I, I wanna help. I think that I have a pretty diverse professional background. And I think that I have a pretty good track record of volunteering in town in various organizations and giving my time up, my kids' time up, my wife's time up, my parents' time up. And I, I really wanna help. I think that what we've seen over the last few years are a lot of good people. Everybody who's serving, all the incumbents, the mayor, they're all good people and they all wanna help the town. But I, I think that I have something to offer to that team. And so, I think that I could be a, a member of the team, maybe somebody who not everyone will agree with all the time, but I think that I would provide some foresight and, and, and background that could, that could benefit the town. So, one of the things I used to do, I worked at Griffin Hospital, and we used to do something called the Community Health Profile. And what that would do is it would compile, it would compile labor statistics, education statistics. It would compile health statistics in the area. And it would help the hospital make the decisions on how they wanna allocate their funds, what they wanna focus on. And, and most of this information is publicly available. Myself and a team of usually interns from, from an NPH program at Southern would compile all this information. We would create the report. We'd present it to the hospital. And the hospital would then move forward with, you know, how it wanted to tackle certain issues, whether it be around the prevalence of certain types of cancers or things like that. And so, I think that I have a set of eyes that would be of use. I think that I have, you know, a pretty long history in town. My family's been here in a while and I, I really wanna, you know, help out. And that's, I think, the biggest thing that I would bring. So, thank you for the question.
Thank you. That concludes the question and answer portion of the program. Each candidate will now have two and a half minutes to make a closing statement. Mr. Cerfoni, would you please begin?
Thank you very much. Thank you to the Wallingford community women, to Government TV, to Matt Zabrick, Audrey Larson, Lila Pickering, and Luther Tramell for making this evening possible and what it has been. Very important to get to know who your candidates are. In my four terms on this council, I have learned that Wallingford is about people. The people of this town are what make Wallingford great. And I'm gonna give you a couple of examples that jump to the forefront of my mind. Mark Brennan. Mark Brennan's a guy who's an amateur comedian. Twice a year, he puts on a comedy show. He gets 500 people to come to the show. He gets three professional comedians. He humbly opens the show. Does this all as a volunteer, raises tens of thousands of dollars so that kids can play park and rec sports if their parents can't afford the tuition. Ken Welch, dealing with a family tragedy, starts the Coalition for a Better Wallingford to deal with the addiction crisis, to work towards an uphill and never-ending battle. Running the Red Ribbon Events this week that you see in front of Town Hall. Maria Harlow is the executive director of the Spanish community of Wallingford. Scout, works to continue to integrate Hispanic members of our community and make life better for them. Their services have extended to the larger community. And whoever it is that donated that dog, Tate, to the Wallingford Police Department, our drug dog, anonymously, that's the kind of people that Wallingford are. I'm pleased that I've had the opportunity to serve them. I am honored that I've been able to work with our council as their chairman for the past two terms. It's been a great group. It's been a great time. Our businesses in town are terrific supporters of everything that goes on here. I've had the opportunity to meet with them through the Economic Development Commission to continue to make sure that they have what they need here in Wallingford. I've also had the opportunity to work with them the past few years to make sure that Wallingford has fireworks for its Independence Day celebration. To me, Wallingford are its people. We can work all the other problems out because we are great people and we work together. And I thank you all for the opportunity to have served you for these past four terms and hope for another. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bruce Conroy?
Well, I'm gonna have to agree with him. Wallingford is definitely about the people. So, as a counselor, and why you should vote for me is because I do not believe we should bear, the people, the residents, should bear the burden of increases such as the electrical increase that was solely on the shoulders of the residents. Giving our corporate partners an unasked-for break. We need to do more for the people is absolutely correct. The parks are not in good shape, none of them. Some of them are, especially the one that was done by residents. Our roads are bad. Our schools are old. While their, while the school system is good, the facilities are not. So, we need a new leadership with a new vision. And I believe that me and the people running with me are the people with that vision. And I think y'all should look for us. I'd like to thank every one of you. And my daughter went to Sheehan, so you're my favorite. And the Wallingford women and the Government TV, you're all great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Craig Fishbein?
Thank you. I wanna thank all the panelists for the questions. You know, we don't, some years, questions are better than others. And I, I thought the questions were excellent. As a member of the town council, throughout my terms, I've been guided by three main principles. A quest for smaller government, lower taxes, and less interference in the day-to-day affairs of our law-abiding citizens. When I was growing up, I, one of my favorite shows I liked to watch was The Adventures of Superman. And just so that you know, for the last week, I've been trying to get Counselor Chortel to come through the doors with a big S on his chest, right when I said Superman. Been telling him it was Chortel, but really, it's Superman. And I remember the episode where Jimmy Olsen and Lois Lane are, are put in a cave by the bad guys. And they have blindfolds on. And the bad guys leave the cave and they take the blindfolds off and it's dark. Jimmy Olsen, he's scared, scared of the dark. And Lois, you know, she was always the strong one. She found a match in her, in her pocketbook. And she lit the match and, you know, the light, the fear went away. you know, that, that darkness is, to some, like government. It's dark, it's fearful, it's the unknown. And that light, I tell people that democracy flourishes in the face of bright light. On the council, I think I've brought light, or at least I've attempted to. I've, I've fought for openness and transparency in the budget, asked a lot of questions. My fellow counselors complain about my questions. But I, I think I've opened a lot of doors and I've at least gotten educated and I think some of the public has gotten educated. I've fought through the Freedom of Information Commission to, to get information for the public about how our tax dollars are actually spent. And good democracy that's created by that light is the foundation for smaller government, lower taxes, and less interference in the day-to-day affairs of our law-abiding citizens. On November 7th, you're gonna have a lot of choices. I just ask for your kind consideration on that day. And God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie Heine?
Thank you. For all of you that may not know me, I've lived here for 12 years. I'm an attorney at the, I'm a partner in the law firm of Malvi Oliver Gould and Crata, which is located in Hamden, Connecticut. It's a seven-person litigation firm. I've been married for 11 years, married to my wonderful wife, Myklin Mahoney, who is also an attorney. She works for Connecticut Legal Services doing legal aid work in New Britain. We have a six-year-old son. When my wife and I first bought our house, we live over on South Elm Street, a couple doors up from Patwall Field. When we bought our house, there was a house between our house and the baseball field. There was an elderly couple that lived there. They sold the house to a local developer who came in, knocked the house down. The empty lot remained there for a couple years. The developer couldn't sell it. So, the town proposed purchasing the lot. And they were going to expand the parking lot for the baseball field within five feet of my property line. I came to the town council. I learned it, learned about it from sitting right where you're sitting one night. And I came, I, I came to the town council looking for support. I didn't get any. And at that point, I knew I was on my own. I started, I, I researched the issues, I did my homework. I asked tough questions, I demanded answers. And in the end, it turned out that there was an alternative plan that the town had not ever considered. In the end, the town went with the alternate plan, saved, ended up with the same number of spaces and for over $100,000, close to $200,000 less. I did that as a resident. Now, the town is gonna be facing some difficult issues coming up. Okay? How to protect our reserve fund? How to attract business? How to revitalize our lower downtown area? How to make sure that our children are given the best education possible? You're gonna want somebody that's gonna ask those tough questions, that's gonna do the homework, that's going to demand the answers. I've done it as a resident and I will do it as a town counselor and I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Laffin?
Thank you, as always. And as everybody up here at some point has said or will say, thank you to the Wallingford community women for putting this together as you do every year, whether it's a state or municipal election. Thank you to the Government TV crew, not just for tonight, but for all of your hard work over all the years in reaching out and communicating government and the process to the, to the people and making that available, both on TV and on YouTube. Thank you to The Record Journal, The New Haven Register, and Lila and Audrey for your questions tonight. And thanks to my kids in the back for not freaking out during the meeting and getting bored so I could sit quietly and focus on the questions. One of them has headphones on, he doesn't even know what I said. I'm sorry that, Matt, I didn't get a question from you. In honor of that lost question, I'm gonna answer one of Audrey's instead. What do I love about Wallingford? What I love about Wallingford, and I've been here my entire life, is, is our potential. It's not what we've done. And it's not what we're gonna do tomorrow, but it's what we're capable of doing. It's how we've reached to touch that potential. And, and no, we haven't met it yet. And, and we're not gonna tomorrow, and I hope we don't tomorrow. And I hope we don't meet our potential in the next two years. Because I want our potential to always be out of reach. I wanna be the town that, when the state is in dire, dire situations, to come to them and be like, oh, we're gonna take all their money. Or we're gonna take all their cheese, like a couple years ago. Stay patient. We need to trust in our journey, you know? And I talked about this two years ago, too. We're not leaders here or in this room, whether we're elected or not, because of the power that we hold, but of how we influence and empower people. The people of Wallingford want good news. The Record Journal's gonna talk about this woman in Sidon that grew this, like, giant squash. Like, Wallingford wants to talk about good stuff, too. And I think a lot of times, we get bogged down in the negative division that's occurring all over the country. And instead, we need to focus on ourselves and our potential and how to get not just through tomorrow, but past tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina Morgensting?
Thank you. I wanna say thank you to the Wallingford community women. I wanna say thank you to a very large turnout in the audience. I come to meetings all the time and this is a really great night. I wish the cameras could turn around for the people at home. I wanna give a really huge thank you to the volunteers from my campaign. This is my second time running. I came really close last time and so we started a lot earlier. We call my home "The War Room" every Thursday. Thousands of postcards and letters, thousands of doors have been knocked. And I do have a way of bringing people together to work for me. So, I want to use that skill to work for you and put that skill to work in understanding people's needs and wants and getting in a room together with the commercial business owners, the government, our state reps. We have, we have three state reps in this town. And the town and the state are not always communicating together in a way that allows us as a town to know what's coming. Whether it be the state government, whether it be Bristol Myers, we have got to, as a town, be able to communicate with the people around us. Talk about vision, talk about planning. We can't leave our blinders on. We just began a transit-oriented development study when the railroad station was already underway. The time was a long while prior to that. But I, I don't lose hope. I, I come every time needed to look for solutions. It's not enough that I work 40 hours a week as a physician assistant. I need more and more. Don't ask me why. So, put me to work for you, please. I ask for your votes November 7th. And like Bruce said, the, the Democratic ticket, we have a vision, we have a leader, we have a goal. Please, if you have any questions, call us, email us. I'm happy to, any of us, show up at your door. We're talking to people and hearing what you need. That's what we want to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. John Laterno?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Wallingford community women, all our panelists, especially the high school students. You did a great job. It's hard to talk about Wallingford in two and a half minutes. To take an hour, hours-long conversation and compress it down. But Wallingford is a great town. And it's our government that is making this town great, along with its people, the people that volunteer countless hours in Wallingford, all different organizations. What I would like to ask you for is your vote. I'd like to come back for another two years. It'll be my sixth term. I feel I have some unfinished work. And there's a couple of things I'd like to see. One of the things, the unfinished work, what I'd like to do this term with, along with my fellow counselors, is to work on the payroll system for the town of Wallingford. That needs to be addressed. It has to be brought into the time. No more paychecks. It should be done electronically. We have retirees living out of state, they have to wait for their checks. The other thing that I wanna see is the renaissance that's going to happen in the next two years with Wallingford. And that is the railroad. The railroad is going to, it, it changed Wallingford in the 1850s when it first came through. And it's gonna happen again. Only this time, it's not gonna be industry surrounding the railroad. It's going to be people living there. And it's gonna be a great thing for Wallingford. It's gonna change this town and I believe it's gonna change it for the good. But it's something that government needs to keep an eye on. We need to watch the housing downtown. We need to watch the development downtown. It's gonna be very important for our future because it will change Wallingford for the next 100 years. And I'd like to be part of that. So, again, I ask you for your vote, not only for me, but for the entire Republican slate, from the mayor to the sitting counselors. Bring us back, let us continue the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse Reynolds?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. And thank you to the Wallingford community women. Thank you to Government TV. Thank you to Matt and Luther. Thank you to Ms. Larson, Ms. Pickering. You guys are great. When I was your age and in high school, I had no intention of being in a place like this and I probably should have been. So, good on you. You know, on November 7th, you have, you're gonna have a lot of choices to make. You're gonna have a choice on whether or not you should accept the changes to our charter. You have a decision on who you wanna vote for for mayor. You have a decision on who you want to represent you for the Board of Education. And, and what we're all doing... And, and what we're all doing up here is we're, we're asking to be part of the town council, which basically oversees the budgeting and also ordinances and we have the capability of doing auditing and things. So a lot of the questions that we get asked about are more about our opinions, about what we would put our, our votes behind. Similar to councillor Terno, I, I too think the railroad will present a, a unique opportunity for Wallingford in the sense that we're going to be done before other parts of the state are going to have their stations ready and up and running. So we need to hit the ground running with that. And to do that, we have to be proactive. And with all respect to fiscal responsibility, and I, I am a social liberal, but I'm a fiscal conservative, however, we have too much money. And that money could be wisely appropriated to long-term projects and short-term ones that could improve the area around the railroad, but also create an infrastructure that will draw people, new residents, as well as people who go away to college and potentially could come back to this town to grow the tax base. So that when I'm in my 60s like my folks and my folks are in their 80s, we're not watching schools get shut down and we're not watching our, we're not hemorrhaging people like my friends up in Vermont, see in their towns. So there's lots of things that could potentially happen if we don't do anything. And with all due respect to the current government, we don't really do a lot. We mostly just maintain the status quo. And that's not an insult, because there is something to be said for being steadfast and conservative. However, there is something to also be said for being proactive and having a long-term plan. You know, taking care of things like the Wood and Kaplan property, for example, or taking care of things like, you know, the area down around Route 5. You know, tho- those are the windows to our town. People come and look for parking. We could do more to relax parking restrictions around the restaurants and such. So in short, I'd like to see Wallingford be proactive. I think that I'd be a good member of the team that could help push that forward and I hope I have your support on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes Part 1 of the 2017 Town Council Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford community women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 7th.